Good evening, welcome to the April 8th City Council Meeting. Please rise to salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call of members. Counselor Agenzio. Absent. Counselor Gwin- Counselor Janino.
Here.
Counselor Garino Suella.
Here.
Counselor Hess.
Here.
Counselor Aramillo.
Here.
Counselor Kelly.
Here.
Counselor McKenna. Counselor Novosolsky.
Here.
Counselor Silvestri.
Here.
Counselor Zambudo.
Here.
And Counsel President Cargliandro.
Here.
Yeah, quorum is present. Approval of the Journal of the Regular Meeting of March 25th, 2024.
All in favor, all opposed?
So moved.
So ordered.
Counsel Order 24133. The Director of HHC and SUDI appear before the City Council to provide information on Narlock's boxes and provide an update on monies from the opioid settlement.
Good evening, everyone. Names and addresses for the record, please.
Sure. Lauren Buck, I'm the Director of Public Health for the City of Revere, 281 Broadway.
Hi, I'm Nicole Palermo. I'm the clinician for the SUDI office in Revere, 281 Broadway.
Hi, Carrie Anne Solemy, Program Manager, 34 Dedham Street, Revere.
Welcome.
Thank you. We're here today on representing the Opioid Abatement Working Group to give the City Council updates on the opioid abatement fund strategies. You can go to the next slide. So I first wanted to give us just a review of the opioid crisis with a focus here in Revere. The graph that you're seeing on this slide represents the number of opioid-related overdose deaths. This is from mass.gov for three different cities in our area, Chelsea, Revere, and Winthrop. Revere is the pink column in this in this graph. And you can see that in 20, I'll start in 2020, we had 21 opioid-related overdose deaths, 2021, 25, 2022, 30. Chelsea and Winthrop have a much smaller population than us, so proportionally, the numbers may seem a little, our numbers may seem higher, but proportionally, we have a higher population. And this is, like I said, from mass.gov. 2023 is not reported yet at mass.gov, so we can use preliminary data from the Revere Police Department. And we can know from that data that we had about 123 total overdoses with about 17 fatal overdoses. Next slide. So just to give a review of what the opioid abatement funding is, many Attorney Generals from from different states chose to bring litigation against opioid manufacturers, opioid distributors, with the recognition that there was kind of nefarious business practices happening and recognizing that they were, you know, targeting advertisements with a recognition that these products were much more addictive than initially advertised. And so Massachusetts is one of the states that received an allocation of settlement funding. The pink chart on the right-hand side of the slide shows that 60% of this money went to the state's opioid recovery and remediation fund. So that went directly to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. 40% went to the municipalities, of which we are one of 30, 350. And so we got a portion of that 40%. The opioid abatement funding kind of administrators are encouraging people to use a pooled funding model with a shared service, of which we are a part of with, sorry, Chelsea and Winthrop. We have chosen to have this money appropriated each year by the City Council. And JSI, John Snow Institute, is just the contractor that oversees the reporting of this funding. Next slide. There's a lot of words on this page, but basically, it's just a major overview of what the funding can be used for in these, in the following buckets. Opioid Use Disorder Treatment, Support for People in Treatment and Recovery, Connections to Care, Harm Reduction, Addressing the Needs of Criminal Justice Involvement Persons, Supporting Pregnant or Parenting Women and Families, including Babies with Neonatal Abstinence Syndrome, and finally, Prevention of the Misuse of Opioids and Implementation of Prevention Strategies. A lot of different categories underneath each of those big buckets. Next slide. This is just an overview of what the City of Revere can expect over the next 17 years and what we've already received. It's a lot of numbers on the screen, but I just want to highlight every, you know, bring everyone's attention to the right-hand side of the screen with the total numbers for each calendar year. You can see that they're not necessarily consistent, they vary. And at the end of the 17 years, they do kind of go down and down each year. So it's important to have a plan for long-term spending. Next slide. So what have we spent so far? So fiscal year '23, we didn't spend any money. Why? We decided we needed to do the route of City Council appropriation, and we were, we wanted to wait until the budget season for fiscal '24 to be appropriated. And for fiscal year '24, you can see that we have two line items that we have, that the City Council appropriated for salary and benefits, and then for miscellaneous goods and services. A note that this balance includes payment awarded in March 2024 from Walgreens, Tavia, Allergan, and Walmart, which have not been appropriated by the City Council yet. They just were received last month. And I also want to note that going forward, we don't anticipate needing to spend any of this money on salary and benefits. That was a kind of a one-year situation, and we don't anticipate needing to use that line item anymore in the in the future. Go to the next slide. And so the, obviously, the goal is to spend this money efficiently, but also with with a lot of forethought. And so there, we're going to be presenting about the Opioid Abatement Working Group, which is the decision-making body on how to spend this money. We are representatives of that group, but there are many different interests represented in it. But the goal of that group is to create a long-term spending plan with regular meetings, communicating to the public, communicating to the council and the administration, of which we are starting here today, and really thinking of innovative ideas to do so. I'm going to pass it off to Nicole.
Hi, everyone. I'm going to be talking about the
Sorry, next slide.
About the working group that we've created. It was part of the agreement that we had. You need to have a working group that makes kind of decisions on where this money goes, how it's spent. It just brings different innovative ideas. The group is, consists of a bunch of different partners. We have MGH Primary Care, who specializes in homelessness outreach and substance use disorder. We have people with lived experience on their own, and people with lived experience of family members or loved ones, bereaved parents. We have outreach workers that specialize in substance use and homelessness as well. Community-based organizations. We have some people from those, like Healthy Streets and Health Innovations. And then our municipal departments, who are kind of on the front line, seeing this every day, like myself, Carrie Anne, and Lauren. We get a lot of homelessness calls, substance use disorder, coming in from family members and individuals. So we're kind of who consists of this group and makes the decisions on where the money goes together. And we have the school resource officers, too, so RPD is in there. We're always open to accepting new members into the group if people are interested in wanting to know where this money is going and wanting to have a voice in that. So what we do, like I said, we make the decisions on where the money goes, but we bring also a multitude of different viewpoints based on kind of your area of expertise. And from there, we vote and make decisions on what we're going to do with the money. We meet monthly right now, and we are going to continue to do that for the foreseeable future unless we need to meet more than that. We have minutes and agendas that are taken every meeting, and eventually, those will be, those haven't been updated yet, right? Eventually, those will be on our website so that the public can view them, see what we're talking about, see what we've discussed, what we voted on. And then the dates of the meetings are up there. We've met six times already. Next slide, please. So just to reiterate, the importance of having people with lived experience represented in the decision-making is that those are people who are directly affected by the opioid crisis. So the requirement of the agreement, it has to reflect the input of our communities, people who have personal experience with the opioid crisis, and experts in treatment and prevention, and staff of organizations that are carrying out this abatement work. We're ensuring that Revere is hearing all of these voices. We're going to do surveys with gift cards to give out to community members so they also have input and kind of say, and where this money goes and where they would like to see it go. We have people that we've invited to the working group that we provide transportation for, like people who are suffering from chronic homelessness or substance use disorder and can't get themselves to the group. We provide transportation for them to come. So there's really no barriers of being in this group. We have regular communication with our outreach workers, and our website will eventually be up and running in the next month or so. And then we plan on doing some focus groups as well. Next slide, please. So these are the spending priorities for this fiscal year '24. Because it was kind of, we got together so, and like, short notice, and we didn't get the council appropriation of the money, we only had $10,000 to spend for this fiscal year. We kind of wanted to start out slow and do more long-term spending. A thousand of that is going to be for the gift cards for the survey participants, $500 for a speaker fee to come in and kind of discuss with us, maybe some prevention strategies for kids in school. We have to vote on that still. $2,000 will be miscellaneous funds that will be held by an outside agency, so that could be for stuff to help with laundry services, transportation to medical appointments, things like that, funding for like funerals, funeral costs. And then $6,500 is going to be used towards the Narlock's boxes, which is what brought us here kind of tonight. There's different styles and different types of Narlock's boxes, and that totals the $10,000 that we voted on how to spend that money this year. And then Carrie Anne is going to get into the Narlock's boxes.
Thank you. Hi, everyone. So Narlock's boxes, I know everybody is wondering, what is that? What does it mean? So a Narlock's box is basically, there are outdoor cabinets that can be placed throughout the community on outside light posts, or what are those things called? I don't know. Ballards. So if anybody recognizes, you will see a, if you look on the slide, you'll see the big purple sticker that says Narloxxone, so it'll be easy to identify. The cabinet will, the outdoor cabinet will hold up to 12 kits of Narloxxone, and there's two doses in each kit. Those are the outdoor ones. And the ones next to it, the little emergency overdose emergency kit, those we are going to try to roll out as we work on our business engagements with, engaging with small businesses to hopefully encourage them to start to have Narloxxone in their establishments as well. Biden and Harris just put out a release that they are encouraging that within businesses to have Narloxxone on hand and have staff trained on how to use it. So Narloxxone, let me go back up. Narloxxone and Narcan is the same. It's just the generic name is Nar- the generic name is Narloxxone, and the brand name is Narcan. So if I say those words and you're confused, that's what it is. Next slide. So some frequently asked questions. Narloxxone is a medication. How can it be used in public? Some of those questions might come up. As of this year, the FDA made Narcan a non-prescription medication. This means that anyone can access Narcan either by buying it at a pharmacy or obtaining it through a harm reduction program. The Narlock's boxes are an extension of our harm reduction program in Revere. Next question would be, would it be dangerous if a child got their hands on Narloxxone? Narloxxone is relatively safe medication. The benefits of Narloxxone used for preventing opioid overdose deaths far outweigh the risks of the medication. It is crucial to note that Narloxxone is effective in reversing the effects of opiates, but it will generally not harm if opiates are not present in the system. Narloxxone is not a controlled medication and has no street value. You cannot become addicted to it. The next question, does this insensitize drug use? Studies have shown that Narloxxone access and distribution does not lead to more drug use or riskier drug use. Some studies have actually shown that the availability of Narloxxone may lead to a decrease in opioid use. The next question, what security measures will be put in place and how will the Narcan be restocked? The SUDHI office plans to monitor the Narlock's boxes closely and restock them from our stores weekly. We have consulted with the neighbor, with neighboring communities who have implemented this program over the last six months, and they have experienced almost to no issues with vandalism or inappropriate use. We also work closely with Revere PD and will update them with any issues that arise. Next slide. And I'm going to turn this over to Lauren, and she can talk about the heat map and locations we have identified.
So we wanted to make sure we were locating these boxes in places that really needed it and using data to do so. And so our data analyst was able to compile three years' worth of overdose data and create what's called a heat map. This is basically just a computerized picture, picture demonstration of where our overdoses occurred. This is de-identified data. It's longitude and latitude is used, and so you can't pinpoint specific houses or anything like that. It's de-identified and kind of widened to in a certain extent. However, it does prove very useful when we're trying to determine where these would be most effective. So on this slide, I just have the overdose heat map for 2022. But if you go to the next slide, you can see the heat map for 2023 and 2024. Obviously, we haven't had, we're only into April of 2024, so it looks a lot different. But then you can also layer all of those years together. And that's what we use to do our initial scouting locations. We haven't picked locations for every box, but we have quite a few good locations picked out. And if you go to the next slide, you can see this is a blown up or a zoomed-in map of where we've decided to locate three of the boxes. They're in the green stars are where the boxes will be located. And again, they're right over major areas of overdose that we can tell because of the way that the the dots look. They're yellow, they're bigger. We know that that means that they've had more overdoses in that area over the last three years. So three locations on this slide. On the next slide, you can also see another location that we co-located between two hot spots as well. And then on the final slide, we're also using as a way to identify where locations are, we do regular syringe pickups based on 311 and emails and calls. And so we know, you can see that the green area, the green star doesn't reflect a heat map for an overdose, but it does reflect a compilation of syringe pickups where we've had a large number of syringe pickups, which also can correlate to where we need to have these boxes. And so that's another location that we have determined. We've, we've done ride drive-alongs with DPW to make sure we're locating these in city land and to make sure that we, you know, we can do the digging of the poles and all that kind of stuff. But we had our first drive-through a couple weeks ago. We need to do another one to make sure we're catching all the right areas. But these are the initial locations that have been identified. And that is it. You can go to the last slide, which is basically just if there are any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I know we have some counselors who have questions. I'm going to start with Counselor Silvestri.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you all for being here tonight. Before I proceed with questions, I wanted to highlight the the model used to calculate the distributions from the opioid settlements. The model that was allocated was first, the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services used data, the prevalence of opioid disorder in a county from the years 2007 through 2016. They got this data by inpatient to detox facilities and other areas like that. They then took the data from the Centers of Disease Control and Prevention, other federal agencies on overdose deaths in a county from the years 2006 to 2016. Drug Enforcement Agency then used data on opioid shipments from 2006, 2014 to that specific county. So that's how they came up with the money allocated to each individual community. And the reason this hits home so so much for me is because I had so many friends struggle and lose their lives in these years. So it's, it's very important that this allocated funds is is used in the proper ways. How much to this state was was used in salaries? Is it 8,000 or is it 88,000?
For fiscal year '24, it was 88,000.
Are you familiar with the term supplanting?
Yeah.
Okay. So I have a little bit of concern that that's what we did here. So clearly, in the opioid abatement funds, funds that we get issued, it states that you can't replace what you had in thing, right? So we removed some positions from from the SUDI office, and now we're recreating other plans of action with opioid abatement money. That's the key definition to supplanting. I think we need to take a longer look and maybe contact the JSI for some input on exactly how we're using the funds, because I know that 88,000 shouldn't have been used for salaries. And what's disappointing even more so is that we were promised last year that no money was going to be used from the opioid abatement on on salaries. So then, my next question would be, you pin on, how do you plan on doing the surveys? How do you plan on getting the surveys out?
So we're going to put it on the website, on the Facebook pages. We're going to do community outreach and to our homeless population and give out gift cards and try to get it out that way, as well as the Health Innovations Office, and the high schools have a high school self-care fair. So we're going to make sure that we have surveys there for the younger folk to, you know, complete the survey and get a gift card.
Have you looked into the model that Boston or Lynn or Swamp Squad have used for their? You have?
Yeah, we, we actually copied some of their questions.
Okay, because I'm not sure using the gift cards for the survey would be the best part. I think the survey should be mass blast, maybe use some funding to put it in the newspaper, get it out there, and then use the gift cards for the people that come and use, work on the focus group. That, that's usually how it's, so I hope that's, that's what we plan on doing.
Yes.
And then my last thing I'm going to leave with with the Narlock's boxes, you know, it's a, it's a good idea. As you said, the Biden-Harris administration just pushed for for stores locally to put them inside, you know, their medicine boxes or cabinets. My, my concern with the Narlock's boxes, do we have to purchase the Narloxxone from the Narlock's boxes?
No, so we're part of the CNP program, which is the Community Narloxxone Program through the state, so we get it for free, and we're able to stock the cabinets.
Okay. Do you think this is a missed opportunity for outreach by making, by putting the Narloxxone like in boxes instead of having like training sessions where you meet with people in in these red areas? Because the, you have a number that says 25, there was 25 calls or, but actually, only 22 of those, five of those were non-opioid related. So 22 are opioid related. I mean, what are the chances someone saves a life outside with a Narlock's box? I mean?
Well, the hope is, is that it's readily available, people can see it out and about, God forbid something happens, you know, hey, there's a Narlock's box right down the street. That's the hope. And the, the other hope is, is that we make sure that our outreach workers are doing homeless outreach every week, and they are on the boots, on the ground, you know, getting folks, making sure that they have Narloxxone. We're doing post-overdose door knocks, we're making sure families are carrying it. Anybody who enters our office, we ask them if they need it, or they, you know, know about it, we train them, et cetera.
And how do you, how often are we going to check the boxes?
Weekly.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor McKenna.
Thank you. Thank you for being up here. I just have a few questions. First of all, I've lost a lot of students. Everybody knows that I was a teacher for 33 years, and I lost a lot of students from overdosing. And this is really near and dear to my heart, but who is going to prevent the abuse of people just going into the boxes and, or kids and just taking out the items that are in there? And the other thing, too, is, I know you said that the high school is educating, they're having a program, but I really do think that you guys really need to go into the high school, the schools, starting from the first grade, and tell them what this is about and how it saves lives, you know? So I think it really, education starts in the schools, and I really think that that's where you guys should start. So it is not a being abused by people just taking it out, or kids taking it out. I can see high school kids going in and taking it out, you know, so.
Well, our thought is, is if they're taking it, then hopefully, it gets used by somebody who might need it. That's the thought.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Hess.
Thank you, Mr. President. Guys, thanks so much for being here tonight. Can you talk a little bit, I know you showed the map with the hotspots, and '23, I think 2022, there were quite a few red or yellow ones, but can you talk a little bit about the placement of the Narlock's boxes? And I know the city, are there a few hotspots centrally located? Is it mostly, is it down the beach? Is it near public parks? Have you guys worked with the Revere Police to find out what the, the worst or the toughest spots are?
Yeah, so based on the heat maps, the group's kind of input, the police department data, our people with like lived experience, current lived experience, you know, where they are seeing the most people that they're with, using all that stuff, is where we kind of decided or voted on where they would be best used. But they're pretty spread out around the city, so there's, you know, one over on West Revere where there's a lot of, we get a lot of the syringe pickup. So if you're using and you're dropping your needle and you walk by the Narlock's box, hopefully, it, you know, is a sign, okay, I'm going to take this with me just in case when I get to the house I'm going to or down the street, something happens, I have it on me, you know, someone will go in my bag and find it, or it's in my hand. The beach, down the beach in Beauchamp, Shirley Ave, that's obviously a big hotspot. So Shirley Ave, there'll be two. There's going to be one near the park, like kind of in the middle of Shirley Ave, which there's some restaurants, too, that potentially have high overdoses. And then near the train station as well, there's a lot of overdoses over there. Broadway, we have one. The Dunkin' Donuts is, there's a lot of overdose data from Dunkin' Donuts. And then Target, because that's where our main encampments are typically located. So there's a lot of people who are using, coming in and out of those encampments all the time. So we're hoping that these get people and their like paths traveled and they use them as needed.
And any idea how many boxes the city will get total?
We purchased 10 as of right now.
And each one has, was it 12 kits? So 12 kits with 24?
Yeah.
24 doses.
24 doses in each. And I take it once the Narlock's boxes are up, the city, there will be a map to show to find where the Narlock's boxes are throughout the entire city? Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Yarmio.
Hi, thank you for being here, and very exciting work that we're doing to prevent more overdoses in our city, so I really commend you on that. Just one touch base, I know that in the, in the opioid community, there's an increased use for the harm, for the harm reduction vending machines. And I wanted to see if you can talk through us, talk us through that and see if there are, have you made any like comparisons between the boxes and machines and what works best and what's like the best practice right now?
We actually have a really exciting opportunity to bring a harm reduction vending machine to Revere as well, through a different source of funding, the EA- through a different source of funding, the EAPS grant, which is the grant that established the Behavioral Health Unit in Revere. And we are, we've looked at different, again, we've consulted with, the city of Lynn has, you know, gone that route as well. So we talked with them, and we reached out to a couple of different companies. But the goal and hope is that very soon we will also have a harm reduction vending machine, too. Now, the plotting of the location of that and what goes into it in terms of supplies is kind of a long process, because they have to individually measure each item that you put in a vending machine, package it, send, you know, all that kind of stuff has to go into it. But the hope is that we will also have a harm reduction vending machine as well. The nalox boxes are, obviously, they only have Narcan, whereas a harm reduction vending machine can have a lot more selection. They're obviously a lot more expensive. But the hope is that we'll have both.
And so just for, like, fiscal purposes, how, because you could probably use some of the funding, same funding, right? How are we weighing that, I guess?
Well, this was an opportunity that came through the EAPS grant because there was some extra funding that, like, in this fiscal year. And so I asked for it to be allocated for a harm reduction vending machine. So we're in the early stages of that, but that's where, it's a different source of funding.
Okay, understood. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Garina Sawaya.
Thank you all for being here. We really appreciate the work that you're doing to help these people. I have a question. I was listening to my colleague, Counselor McKenna, and I totally agree with her with the education starting first in the schools. Will there be any nalox boxes in the school systems?
Not as of right now. The school system, they have their own way of doing things and not sure.
Well, I can speak to the fact that every nurses' station in Revere Public Schools, the nurses carry naloxone and have been trained, as well as the school resource officers as well. So in Revere Public Schools, the naloxone is in the nurse's office.
Okay. And in the placement of these boxes, how about to avoid abuse, placing them in an area that's actually patrolled by police that has, police maybe have cameras there? Do you think that would be a possible solution to it?
So we've heard that from other people as a suggestion. What I will say is, we do talk regularly with Revere PD, and before anything is cemented in the ground, we'll make sure that they are aware of the locations. But there also is an idea that, you know, this is a resource that we want people to use, and potentially, people might be more reluctant to access it if they know that cameras are on. And so, you know, it's, there's a balance that you have to walk there. And like we mentioned, the city of Lynn has had these boxes for about five months now, and they haven't really seen any inappropriate use or any vandalism. Obviously, you know, that could happen anytime. But we also want to be cognizant that this is a population who would potentially be reluctant to access the Narcan if it was under surveillance. I don't know, do you want to add anything?
The reason why I asked is in case somebody decides to take three, four, five of them out, and then, God forbid, somebody really needs it and there isn't any left. But you are going to be refilling them weekly, right? All right, perfect. Thank you so much for all the work you do.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Kelly.
Thank you. Thank you for being here tonight and providing all the information that you did. I have a question regarding, when you had a chart up, and it was depicting the allocation of funds. And I could be wrong, but it seemed like there was a very nominal fund being allocated for prevention and education. And I would like to see, and I don't know if it would be an option or if you would consider, to try to allocate more funds towards prevention and education in the schools and in other, you know, we, I mean, of course, we want to help as much as we can by having this resource. But I think prevention is where it all starts, right? And we need education regarding that. So I think maybe we want to allocate more funds in that direction.
Sure, I can start, but I'm sure you have something to add. We have actually only appropriated fiscal year 24. So the opioid abatement working group decides on how to spend the whole rest of the money. And I can tell you that there is a strong support to put money towards prevention as well. So, you know, I don't know if you want to add anything to that. But there's, prevention will be considered, and, you know, that's a strong, the buckets that I introduced, that's something that we've talked a lot about in terms of bringing money to that in the future.
Okay, thank you. And then, my other concern, I heard you mention that, or you had some statistics regarding danger or safety to children if they were to get into this. So there, did I hear right that there would be no danger to a child if they were to, you know, I know we have to weigh these things, but that would be, you know, a very high on my priority list that a child is not in any danger from this whatsoever?
Honestly, it is very, very safe medication. It's like a Flonase spraying up your nose. So if you don't have opiates in your system and you spray it up your nose, nothing's gonna happen. However, there's always a chance that you can have an adverse effect to anything, right? You never know what your body can take. So that's why they don't come out and say, this is absolutely safe, because there's always a chance. But the risks far outweigh the, I mean, that's what I meant.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Counselor. And thank you all for being here this evening and answering all of our questions. Have a great night. We're gonna place this on file.
Item number four. Brian Dakin, project manager, Letfield, will present an update on the Revere High School building project.
Good evening, sir. Name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. Brian Dakin, One High Street. Just wanted to run through a little what we've been up to with the project for the last number of weeks since the schematic design submission and what's coming. A little bit of a look ahead until next month, into next month. So we, I'm just gonna, you have that actually correct? Yeah, perfect. Okay. So the sort of line on this page is where we're at now. What we've done to date is we have submitted the schematic design package. We have submitted the vote language, which is the second slide here, that ultimately will move forward on May 20th to the MSBA legal department. I hope to get sign off from them in the next, in the coming days. We submitted the package on February 29th. We spent a couple of weeks answering questions with MSBA staff. The project, including the superintendent, mayor, and a few other folks from the school system and city, attended a facilities assessment subcommittee meeting with the MSBA, which went very well. We heard really nothing but praise on the project, on the proposal at that meeting. We've also had what's called a project scope and budget conference call. All of that is leading towards the April 24th MSBA board meeting, where I have extremely high hopes that they will pass the project and issue a board action letter the following day. That's really the point. When we get the board action letter and the project scope and budget agreement within a week of that meeting, that's when all the numbers become finalized. I'm confident that we're gonna be at least as good as the numbers we presented you, probably better. But until the MSBA board makes the motion and confirms the final grant amount, that's sort of a ball in their court. So once they issue the project scope and budget, I've compared that before to sort of acceptance of an offer if you're buying a house. So we're gonna come back to the council meeting on the 6th to approve that offer. That is not the full debt authorization, bond authorization vote. After that meeting, we will be doing the, running the advertisements, and outreach required to get us towards the May 20th meeting, which is the meeting we'll be asking the council to formally approve the borrowing. That all then sends us off and running. That's sort of the MSBA side. I can answer any questions in a second. But I also just wanted to note, we're proceeding with the permitting process. We've re-engaged the conservation commission. Peer review is underway. That should all lead towards either a June or a July hearing for the ANRAD process, the delineation of wetlands on the site. We've also plotted out the MEPA, the State Environmental Permitting Process. Most likely in June and September, we'll be doing public hearings that will create a spot on the website, be able to take questions, get info out there, run meetings in a number of languages live, and really do a lot of outreach that leads towards the MEPA filing. MEPA filing will probably happen in September. We've also re-engaged National Grid and worked with various city departments to just get on top of what's going on down there. There's some electrical work National Grid would like to get going on, and it probably will benefit the project. So we have their attention. It's always good to have National Grid's attention way in advance. And we've met with the city and the city planner to speak about some of the items to get as ahead as we can on the potential for a commuter rail stop. So in terms of site usage and permitting, we are full speed ahead. But the real big stuff in the next month is all this MSBA-related stuff that ultimately leads towards the bond authorization hearing on May 20th.
Thank you very much, Brian. I'm just gonna go from my right to my left. If any counselors have any questions or comments. Counselor Silvestri.
Thank you, Mr. President. Brian, thanks for coming up always. Brian, do we have a, maybe a glance at numbers right now? Like, do they look like they're getting better? Do they look like they're getting worse?
I think the MSBA share, the MSBA offer, if you will, is gonna come back a few million better than what it was submitted as. I certainly don't want to put words into the MSBA board's mouth, but in working with their staff, they really crunch through every number in the budget and ask a bunch of questions about, why should it be eligible? Why isn't it eligible? And we think we've made some headway on them agreeing and accepting that certain items that are sort of a judgment call are in fact eligible. So I'm confident, I think it'll get a little bit better than what we presented.
Excellent news. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other counselors? Permission to speak from the chair? Thank you. Brian, thank you for being here. I was happy to see the conservation side of it was restarted. I watched the meeting the other night. Do you anticipate everything being okay on the conservation end in regards to the additional flagging in the wetlands that are at the racetrack? Are they, I did look into movable wetlands, by the way, so those are a real thing. But do you anticipate everything being on track with the current design? Do we anticipate having to change anything?
I think, I think we'll get through that process without any major changes. And what I mean by major changes is we might have to tweak areas a little bit here, slide a road a little bit, a drive. But I don't envision us losing, having to lose any site program, any of the actual fields or parking as a result of this. So there's always gonna be some give and take on what our consultants, where our consultants believe the wetlands are and the CONCON process and their peer reviewers. So we think we've approached it conservatively, and I just don't envision major change to the site. I think the long-term, the trickiest thing with that site is getting the projects permitting and planning done in a way that still allows a train station to fit in there.
Very good. And do you know, I know that the study from the company that you all hired is done, and that we have to continue now with our third party to essentially evaluate the findings. Do you know if the CONCON has started that process of looking for a third-party company? And if they have, do you know when that would be completed?
They have, the company, the company, I believe, is starting or has started the peer review. So they have it, they know the schedule. And that's why I said it could be a June hearing, could be a July hearing, to sort of finalize it. But all systems are on track for either that June or July final hearing.
Thank you. And just to reiterate, May 6th, we'll be voting on the approval of the MSBA's approval of our submission. And then, the vote for the bonding will be done on May 20th. Is that correct?
Correct.
So there'll be two weeks in between. We're anticipating, hopefully, a presentation, again, publicly on the finances of the city. We're also potentially in executive session on May 6th to talk about the eminent domain. So the big issue for this council is gonna be cost right now. And I agree with Counselor Silvestri, you know, wanting to know about the money. So we have to be sure beyond a shadow of a doubt that the city can handle this. So that's all the questions I have. Thank you again for being here. Any other counselors? Brian, thank you.
Thank you all.
Place on file.
Calendar item number five. Matthew Terrell, Chair of Revere High School Student Senate, will provide an update on the current state of the high school and students' needs.
Good evening, sir. Name and address for the record, please.
Matthew Terrell, 215 Creston Ave. Could I grab an HDMI cable? Thank you so much. See if I have an easier time today.
Oh, you gave him the Mac. No. Yeah. Does it work? Don't email to me?
Would this be your first request as the Chair of the Senate to get Mac-capable HDMI cables? I did it last, last time, so, yeah, it worked. You want me to try?
Yeah.
All right.
It was another person putting it in there.
Yeah, no, maybe. Oh, yeah, there we go. Yeah. All right. It's all set? Maybe?
Yeah, exactly.
I think, yeah, let's go. So first, I'd actually just like to kind of go back on some of the stuff that was presented with the Narcan stuff, just for some school-based stuff. We have been with both student senate, as well as our student representatives of the school committee, been working on an increased focus on public health in the school system. So some of the things we've done is, just recently, in the past couple of months, we've held two CPR training sessions where students were able to get CPR certified. We're currently working with the school department to kind of look to plan to increase Narcan access within the schools, whether it be like in classroom or just increased spots in the halls, as well as our student representatives have another program called RESPIRE, which is aiming to just look to find ways to decrease vaping, electronic cigarettes, other drug usage within the school. So that's a lot of stuff that's going on there. But today, I'm here to present to you guys about transportation needs for Revere High School students. So today, we're gonna talk about scope of the issue, how it impacts students and families, solutions that other communities have had for transportation needs with their schools, and then finally, put some recommendations for Revere. So just to first start, we've done a similar presentation to the school committee on this, because I know a lot of their, a lot of the stuff that has to get done also has to go through them directly. But a lot of what they kind of told us, at least with the funding-wise and kind of like big-picture stuff, would have to come through you guys. So that's why we're here, talking about transportation. So first, we just want to kind of talk about what is the problem. So we have a feedback form that all students, families, parents can respond to, just about general things that they're wondering about the RHS community and maybe problems they have. So I just want to put into context kind of this issue. So one quote we got was that, "It's generally frustrating to have to pay $25 to $30 each month to use a public bus. Students on my street are eligible to take the bus while I can't. And then, I've seen kids get restricted from taking the bus that live a block over from me because they're technically 1.9 miles away. I get a bus ride home, and they know when we practically live next to each other." So as some of you may know, in, I believe it was 2021, the school committee updated their transportation policy for both middle school students and high school students on who could and who couldn't take the bus. It was, you had to leave two miles away for RHS students and 1.5 miles away for middle school students. And a lot of kids kind of got kicked off the bus. They didn't really have a lot of transportation. So we just wanted to talk about how this impacts Revere families. I'm gonna talk about myself. I was technically 1.95 miles away. So what that meant was that I live in the middle of the intersections between, I think it's Summer Street and, I forget. But Webster, thank you. And the bus stops about three houses down from me, and I was not allowed to take it. Luckily, I was able to appeal, and I am now able to take the bus. But if I wasn't, my path, as much as it is only maybe a 40-minute walk, I would be walking along Winter Bath. I would be walking along cars that are going 40 miles per hour right next to me when sidewalks have utility poles right in the middle of them, and it's just not a safe walk. And this is, unfortunately, the reality for plenty of students in the city. And then also, we look at increased commute times. Because more parents are able, are having to drop their kids off at school or more kids are having to drive to school, we see more cars on the road at... are having to drive to school, we see more cars on the road at pickup and drop-off time. And this is not only creating traffic around the schools, but this is creating traffic all across the city, leading to just more traffic congestion. So, what are other communities doing to kind of address transportation needs? We looked at, one was Salem Public Schools, who has mandatory riders, so people who are like in K-2, it's students who live one mile or more away from the school, 3-5, 1.5 miles away from the school, grade 6, two miles in accordance with MGL, and then as well as grades 7 to 12, students who live two or more miles from the school. Those students, along with ones with IAPs as well as like special needs students, also are mandatory riders, but they also have established non-mandatory riders that are kind of given access on a case-by-case needs basis. Criteria for this can include economic status, walkable route status, so the safety of their commute to school if they were walking or biking, as well as younger sibling ridership, such as if their sibling in the middle school has access to a bus, but they don't. Kind of, it's really dependent on existing capacity of the bus. So, if the buses were full of mandatory riders, non-mandatory riders at the time would not have bus access, but they would still be able to put into tiers. So, if applicants met all three criterias, the economic status, walkable route, and sibling, and then so on. So, we're kinda looking at, while understanding that the like population and circumstances of Salem are drastically different than Revere, how can we possibly model the system, expand on it, and learn from it, just so we don't have such a cutoff of you live two miles away, you live 1.95 miles away, one of you can take the bus, one of you can't. But we also wanted to look kind of at a community that's not necessarily exactly like us, but kind of more like us in Salem. We looked at Boston Public Schools, who did a youth transportation project in 2018. A lot of the takeaways is that several groups of the teens would also be excited to use public transit if it was cheaper and more affordable, and then the findings revealed that young people who cannot access opportunities that are available to them won't seek them out. So, as a result of these findings, the City of Boston now provides free M7 cards to all Boston Public School students age 11 and up in partnership with the MBTA. So, what exactly is the M7 card program? Currently, RPS provides middle-school and high-school students with free S-cards, which gives us half off on transit options, so Blue Line, whatever bus routes. But an M7 card would provide students with free rides, unlimited free rides throughout the school year, and then it would return to the S-card during the summer months, where the cost to the city would be $0. So, it's about $30 a month per card, and then it gets shut off in the summer. And it gives you access to all rapid transit lines, all bus lines, and I believe it's 1A for the commuter rail. So, let's move on, kinda transportation recommendations for Revere. So, we wanted to look at it for quick fixes, so this is stuff that can be done for one month to a year. So, first thing is, we want to look into adding a crossing guard or police detail, whatever's easier, at the intersection of Harris Street and American Legion Highway. I've had to walk this to go to swim practice. There's plenty of students that have to walk across the highway and along the highway onto Shirley Ave, onto the beach, and right now, there's no kind of protection away from all the cars that are going down that highway, so we would love to see just anyone that would be able to direct traffic and make it at all safer for the kids. As well as, we wanted to continue collaboration with the state and all planning agencies for like planning efforts along American Legion, Bell Circle, VFW Parkway. I know recently, we were awarded a grant for a study, I believe it was along VFW Parkway, just to increase pedestrian and bike safety, so I'd love to see increased collaboration between the city and all those planning agencies. And then we also wanted to look at the context that, as of right now, Revere High School is not gonna be in the current location, it's gonna be moving down to Wonderland, so we wanted to create a new RHS timeline. So, we wanted to first, along with the school department and RPS Transportation, start and complete a busing study for Wonderland, so we know which students are gonna be eligible for the bus and what buses are gonna be needed compared to when it was at the current 101 school-street site. And then we also wanna start communication with the MBTA in regards to the M7 program, and then also implement more robust, complete street projects throughout the city, just because if it's safer to walk, if it's safer to bike, we'll see more kids that are able to safely get to school, and that's just kind of a overwhelming thing if it's people going to work, people going to school. So, why are we focused so heavily on the M7 card? Let's look at it this way. This is a map of areas within half a mile to a walk to a Blue Line station. It's about a seven-to-12-minute walk, if you're a slower walker, you're a faster walker, and a weekday frequency for these trains is every five to eight minutes. If we had this M7 card, students in Beechmont, students in Shirley Ave would be able to hop on the Blue Line in the morning or the afternoon and get straight to Wonderland and walk across to school. And then we look at the 116, which is going to be a new combined bus route of the 116 and 117 with the new Better Bus Redesign project that is gonna be implemented over the next couple of years. We're looking at an area with .5 miles again. This is gonna be, again, a seven-to-12-minute walk, and the weekday frequency is every to eight to 12, eight to 10 minutes. So, these students, even if they miss one bus, they're only gonna be waiting eight to 10 minutes to catch another to get to school. And once again, we can see the area covered here. And then lastly, this is the 110, another frequent transit bus that will be implemented as part of the MBTA's Better Bus Redesign project. Once again, all the same things, but what I really wanted to show you guys was when we look at this of a high-frequent transit coverage in Revere, once this bus redesign is finished, we see all the places in Broadway, across the beach, Beechmont, even up into West Revere, that will be covered in a seven-to-12-minute walk to a high-frequency transit stop. So, when we look at this, we see that there's so many students in these areas that if they were just, had a card that they could just tap, not worry about paying, and they would get to school within 10 to 20 minutes in the morning and 10 to 20 minutes home in the afternoon. So, I'm taking AP stats right now, I'm not the best mathematician, but I did a little number crunching. So, the cost per year per student would be about $270. As of right now, RHS enrollment is at 2,098 students. So, the net cost is, if we implemented this at the start of the year, we would be paying $566,460 if we got a card for every single student in RHS, and that's for one year. And then also, we looked at the year-over-year enrollment growth for the past 10 years in Revere Public Schools and specifically RHS, and we found a year-over-year enrollment growth of 2.4. So, we looked to hopefully implement this by the year that the new RHS opens, when it will be the most effective, and using that 2.4%, we found that it would cost about $608,296.95 the first year. And then we also looked for the program costs over 10 years to kind of give a big picture, and we found that from 2028 to 2038, while still accounting for the 2.4 year-over-year enrollment growth, it would cost the city in 10 years about $9.3 million. Now, if we take a look at just this year's transportation funding for RPS, overall, we're spending about $8.2 million this year just on transportation, and that is for high school, that is for middle school, that is for elementary school, that is for even busing kids who need transportation to different schools out of the city. So, when we look at this and we increase all of that, it's going to be not a negligible, but it's going to be a worth investment into these students to get this greater access. And also, we wanted to just do one little thing. If there is a possibility of there being a commuter rail stop at Wonderland, we wanted to also focus on the city council providing a pedestrian pathway over the highway, so students can also easily get to school from the Wonderland station, whether it be a pedestrian bridge, an underground people mover with an escalator. And we just wanted to really focus on getting these students to and from school in the safest and most cost-effective way possible. And then, before I have any other questions, I just wanted to give some other updates for Student Senate and Student Reps. Our Student Reps have collaborated with City Lab, taught for representation on the school committee, and working on increasing accessibility of city meetings. The School Spirits/Engagement Committee is working on a district-wide culture night, hopefully that will be happening in May. Scheduling Committee is looking to have a field trip slash volunteer day at the New England Home for the Deaf, as well as a mental health workshop for students and staff. Mental Health Committee is working to supply classrooms with updated stress less boxes, so that's just things like stress balls, different, just stress-relieving activities for the students. And then, as well as our Student Senate Star, our next edition is out on the 24th of April, and that'll be our ninth edition. So, I would love to field any questions that the counselors might have.
Thank you very much, Matthew. Any counselors? Counselor Silvestri?
Thank you, Mr. President. Matt, every time you come up, you're more and more impressive, man. That was an amazing presentation, some amazing information there. I love the M7 card idea, and any way that we can support these happening, please let us know. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Counselor Janino?
Hi, Matt, thanks for coming again tonight. Pedestrian bridge, I'm all for it. Great idea.
Yep.
The numbers you used on this year, this total school population?
Total, no, that is total Revere High School population.
So, it's not including the students that already walked to school, lived in the school area?
The 2,098 was the enrollment of Revere High School, so all students, grades 9 to 12.
So, potentially, it'll be a lower number based on students getting dropped off at school, walking to school, and what have you, as opposed to everyone getting the M7 card?
Yeah, so I think the best way to go about it is definitely an opt-in program. So, we find those students that are in those seven-to-12-minute walks to those bus or train stops, and while they have the option to either drive to school, be dropped off, or walk to school, we allow them to opt in to owning that M7 card because not only is it for, could be useful transportation to and from school, we have a lot of kids that work in other cities, work in downtown, and they would be able to kind of go into downtown practically for free throughout the school year and not have to worry about transportation costs going to work, going to other places. But definitely, that cost could be decreased if we don't have that full enrollment buy-in for those cards.
Thanks. I'm looking at this year, look at your numbers and stuff, and I'm figuring it could be a lot lower than where you're at right now.
Yes.
Based on actual people using the M7 card and stuff like that. It's a great idea, and anything we do to help you out with it, let me know.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Counselor Garino-Souza?
Thank you, man, for coming. Every time you come here, you're even more impressive, you really are.
Thank you.
I just have a couple of questions. You were talking about getting police at the end of Harris Street.
Yes.
Driving by there every day.
Yes.
I see kids, they actually go in and out, in between the cars. They don't care to look and see where they're going.
Yep.
I agree with having the police officer there, it's really important that they cross safely, but you're still gonna have the stragglers that wanna do what they wanna do. As far as the cards are concerned, I agree with these, the M7 cards, but I don't agree with them being used other than going to school. So, I think the cost, if we could get each of the students one of those cards, but limit it to to and from school, I think it would, the cost would go down drastically. And is there any way that the school system could help with purchasing them as well? Is there any extra money in the school budget?
So, when we presented to this, when we presented this to the school committee as well as talking with the transportation director, there is no extra cash within the school system to support this. So, they really kinda told us to come here, but to your point, of course, so to your point about using it out of school and all of those things, it wouldn't be at any extra added cost to the city. So, if we look at to and from school, that's two trips, five days a week, that's 10 trips. That will come out, at least on the subway, it's about $24, and on the bus, it gets to about, I think about $17 to $20. So, when we look at it, these students are using these cards, and they can be using these cards more than once if they're going to internships or stuff like that in the city. They're ending up using these cards more than the $30 a month that we're paying for them. So, in a way that we're saving money rather than having these kids or the city kind of pay on a tap-by-tap basis.
How about, will that be included with the student discount? Will the students be getting a discount, the cards have a student discount attached to it?
Yeah.
So, would that cost go down?
So, if you were to get a month of unlimited on your student discount card, that is $30 a month, so it's the same exact price as the city would be paying per month per card.
Now, wouldn't it be cheaper to get another bus or a couple more buses on than getting the cards?
No, actually. The average cost per student for transportation by bus is close to $2,000 per year. But of course, we also don't have the whole population taking a bus, so it's kind of like equals out that we're paying this if we were giving it to all the students. So, obviously, that cost can go lower if we're just including the students that are eligible.
Okay, thank you.
Of course.
Thank you, counselor. Counselor Haas?
Thank you, Mr. President. Matthew, thanks for coming up here. Great presentation. I know you mentioned you researched Salem a little bit and their routes and their transportation plan. Have you researched or looked at any of the surrounding cities or towns regarding the M7 and the effect that that had and if it was successful or not?
Yeah, so the only comparable district that has been invested in the M7 card is BPS, and I know they're kind of different just because of their size and the money that comes in for that system, so it's just kind of not apples-to-apples completely. But there's plenty of private schools that invest the money and give the cards to their kids. I know BC High, I know some other school districts within Boston also do it, just like private schools.
Great.
But it's been, it's been successful to the extent that it's better than busing their kids to and from.
And this is something, I believe you said, that they'll be able to use it the entire school year, and as soon as the summer comes, they'll return it to the city or to the school department?
The card itself will go back to an S-card, which the students would be able to get half off throughout the summer, so exactly what they have now. But the city would only be paying $30 a month from September to June.
And then pick right back up on school starts, correct?
Yeah, and they would just get issued new cards, 'cause they don't have like a 10-year card, they just give them to schools every year, and it's like a 23, 24, 24, 25.
Great. And congratulations on being named to the Governor's Youth Council, by the way.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Counselor Yarmio?
Matthew, this is, public transportation is my love language, so this is great. We'd be really excited to see if we could partner with Mast Dot to try to get a study on the amount of traffic we can reduce through peak times. I think that'd be a great opportunity to explore there, and, you know, I think we can find some votes here, if not, we'll try to whip them up to try to find that money in the next, you know, we have at least 10 years to plan it, so maybe we can start putting some money in the piggy bank to make this happen. I think, you know, allowing students to move to and from, not just for school, but for all other purposes. We know that this is a working-class city, and a lot of our students work to help support their families, and we wanna make sure that they continue to do that, and if we can give them a little break by investing in this M7 card, that would be a great initiative. So, thank you so much for presenting and look forward to working on this with you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Any other counselors? Permission to speak from the chair? Thank you all. Correct me if I'm wrong, but when the school department submits their budget to the council, we are allowed to cut, but whatever we cut, let's say we make a cut this next budget, we then have to make up for that shortfall next year by law. So, if the superintendent puts in money for the M7 cards, it'll go into their budget. We know that whatever we cut, we have to make up anyway, so, I mean, we're gonna approve the school's budget, we'll do anything for education up here, so just tell the superintendent to work it out. As far as, I'm sorry, I hate to send you back there, but...
Yeah, I know.
As far as the Harris Street American Legion Highway, I know we discussed police, but if you wanted to get like a crossing guard there, I would absolutely contact Director Babo in the Parking Department. I think the M7 cards are a great idea, and I'm curious to see how many cards we would get that would replace public busing, 'cause we pay, I think, $9.1 million this year for public transportation, so I think it's a great idea, it's more cost-efficient, and we like that up here, so, great job, my man. Can't wait to see you next month.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. Place on file. Place on file.
Next up is the zoning subcommittee report.
Chairman Zambudo.
Thank you, Mr. President. As we know, the zoning subcommittee met this evening at 5:00. We had several items on the docket. The first up is 24022, an ordinance further amending the revised zoning ordinance of the City of Revere relative to home-based childcare. That was voted out unanimously in favor. I would ask for a roll call.
Roll call on a second reading?
Ordered on a second reading as amended?
Shall this...
We're working it out. Ordered on a third and final reading as amended? Roll call for engrossment and ordainment.
No, shall, okay. Shall the City Council approve an ordinance further amending the zoning ordinances of the City of Revere relative to home-based childcare as amended? Councillor Genzio is absent. Councillor Janino?
Yes.
Councillor Garino-Suella?
Yes.
Voting yes. Councillor Haas?
Yes.
Councillor Aramillo?
Recused.
Recused. Councillor Kelly?
Yes.
Councillor McKenna?
Yes.
Councillor Novosolsky?
Yes.
Councillor Silvestri?
Yes.
Councillor Zambudo?
Yes.
And Council President Cogliandro?
Yes.
The ordinance is engrossed and ordained.
Sorry for throwing your curveball there. Next item up was 24114, Overlook Ridge LLC, Veris Residential, Hobbes Side 3, 210 Hudson Street, Jersey City, Jersey. I don't have to go through all this. Relative to zoning ordinance further amending the Overlook Ridge overlay district. So, Madam Clerk, I'll let you handle the, how you want to. This was voted out favorably, I believe unanimously. I call for a roll call.
Before the roll call?
I just have a question, just because I'm not on...
Councillor Yarmio?
What are the, the conditions of the special permit? Oh, sorry. Is this not the...
What's the question?
Sorry, no, my fault. Were there conditions attached to the zoning amendment?
Well, the changes, the amendments are what...
Oh, I wasn't, I'm not in zoning subcommittee, so you can walk me through them?
Chairmans, within the zoning subcommittee, it was voted upon and with a favorable recommendation that the property owners entered a development agreement with the City of Revere, indicating that 15% of the residential units in the new, to be developed on Lot 15 are dedicated for affordable housing.
At what area median income?
I believe...
That was not discussed.
Does anyone in the, can anyone answer that question for the councillor, what the AMI is going to be for the affordable?
So the sort of standard accepted definition for affordable housing, it would be what would apply here, 80% of the area median income.
Can I have a roll call, please?
All set, councillor? Thank you. Ordered on a second reading as amended? Ordered on a third and final reading as amended? Roll call for engrossment and ordainment.
Shall the City Council approve an ordinance further amending the zoning ordinances of the City of Revere relative to Overlook Ridge overlay district as amended? Councillor Genzio is absent. Councillor Janino?
Yes.
Councillor Janino, yes. Councillor Garino-Suella?
Yes.
Voting yes. Councillor Haas?
Yes.
Voting yes. Councillor Aramillo?
No.
Voting no. Councillor Kelly?
Yes.
Yes. Councillor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes. Councillor Novosolsky?
Yes.
Councillor Silvestri?
Yes.
Councillor Zambudo?
Yes.
And Council President Cogliandro?
Yes.
Voting yes. Subject matter is engrossed and ordained.
The third item up, another ordinance, this time I won't ask for a roll call. This is 24115, an ordinance further amending the zoning map of the City of Revere relative to CD and RA1 zoning districts in North Revere. It was voted out unanimously.
Ordered on a second reading? Ordered on a third and final reading? Roll call for engrossment and ordainment.
Shall the City Council approve an ordinance further amending the zoning map of the City of Revere relative to the Conservation zoning district? Councillor Genzio is absent. Councillor Janino?
Yes.
Voting yes. Councillor Garino-Suella?
Yes.
Voting yes. Councillor Haas?
Yes.
Yes. Councillor Aramillo?
Yes.
Yes. Councillor Kelly?
Yes.
Yes. Councillor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes. Councillor Novosolsky?
Yes.
Councillor Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes. Councillor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes. And Council President Cogliandro?
Yes.
Voting yes. Subject matter is engrossed and ordained.
The next up is 24118. This time, it is a special permit, and I, this was voted out unanimously, and at this time, I will ask for a roll call. Thank you.
Shall the City Council grant the relief requested subject to the conditions offered by site plan review?
Mr. President, sorry. What are the conditions? Sorry.
Sorry, councillor?
The condition, what are the conditions?
The conditions are in the packet. I'll bring them up. Hold on.
What page are they on? Sorry. Oh, is this Francis Street? Oh, the town, oh, I'm sorry. We're good. I don't need the conditions. All set.
Roll call.
Okay. Councillor Genzio is absent. Councillor Janino?
Yes.
Voting yes. Councillor Garino-Suella?
Yes.
Voting yes. Councillor Haas?
Yes.
Voting yes. Councillor Aramillo?
Yes.
Voting yes. Councillor Kelly?
Yes.
Voting yes. Councillor McKenna?
Yes.
Voting yes. Councillor Novosolsky?
Yes.
Yes. Councillor Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes. Councillor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes. And Council President Cogliandro?
Yes.
Special permit is granted.
Ms. President, can I file for reconsideration?
Suspension of rules, all in favor, all opposed? Suspension rules passes? All in, reconsideration, all in favor, all opposed? So ordered. Resume regular order of business.
This is a communication from the City CFO relative to an amendment to Appendix Table 3 salaries of the revised ordinances of the City of Revere parity salary ordinance.
Good evening, ma'am. Name and address for the record, please.
Claire Zarillo, 281 Broadway, Solicitor's Office. Very simple ordinance that some of you have probably seen before in your years up here, but I have a request for the City Council to make a minor amendment on page, Packet Page 71, or Mini Packet 10B. I don't know which ones you guys have. This is subsection F, Table F, Salary Schedule, Mayor, City Council, and Legislative Branch Employees. There are two tables labeled 1 and 2. There was a typo. We should not have the percentages included there. If you do the math, it does not add up. So we are asking that this council strike 3%, 0.75%, and 3% from those tables under section F in numbers 1 and 2. Okay, just F1 is where we'd request the amendment.
So this is going to be ordered to a public hearing as amended. Councillor Janino?
Looking at this over, and I noticed that the, on section G, Schedule of Salaries for Borders and Commissions, that under the clerks for the Commission, Conservation Commission, Border Health, and Legends Commission, is there any way we could add the Traffic Commission on there also?
I would direct that question to Rich Viscay. I can bring it back to him. I'm not the money man, but I can definitely ask him.
Because it's also a clerk's job that has been overlooked for several years.
Okay.
And that was brought up back about 20 years ago when I, when I was doing it.
Yeah, definitely.
Councillor, we can do that. Can make that amendment. So we can order this to a public hearing as amended, and we'll have time to hash out all the details. So at that point, bring it up again, and we'll discuss what we think is fair. Anyone else? Ordered to a public hearing as amended? Sorry, the public hearing will be April 29th. Thank you.
Here's the motions. Motion presented by Councillor Garino-Suella that the mayor requests the Traffic Commission to install speed calming measures on Pomona Street, including but not limited to a speed hum.
Councillor Garino-Suella?
Motion speaks for itself.
Any other councillors? All in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
This is a motion presented by Councillor Aramillo and Councillor Genzio that the City Council ordered to a public hearing to the following ordinance for the purpose of increasing safety by expanding recreational opportunities for young people. An ordinance further amending Chapter 2.57 Parks and Recreation Department of the Revised Ordinances of the City of Revere.
Councillor Yarmio?
Mr. President, thank you. I'm actually going to make a motion to send this to committee instead of to a public hearing, and if the, my colleagues would entertain that, we would like to send it to Parks and Rec.
If there's no objection, we'll send this motion to the Parks and Recreation Subcommittee. All in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Thank you, Mr. President.
This is a motion presented by Councilor Aramillo that the City Council refer the following proposed ordinance to the Climate Sustainability and Workforce Subcommittee for further discussion. An ordinance creating stronger jobs for Revere residents and improving the well-being of Revere's working families.
Councillor Yarmio?
Mr. President, I'm also going to make a quick amendment to this motion and then move forward with, as presented. There was a typo in Section 2 of this motion. If we, if like my colleagues could humor me by adding the word duration to number four in Section 2 of the motion, before we sent it to the subcommittee.
Yeah.
Can I get a second for that, Mr. President?
Second? Seconds are not required.
Oh, sorry. Thank you.
Okay.
Madam Clerk.
Yeah, add duration.
Great.
Okay, this...
Oh, so we're going to refer this to the Climate Sustainability and Workforce Subcommittee for further discussion. Did one of the councillors want to speak? Councillor Kelly?
I just, I'm a little, this isn't, is this an ordinance? It's presented as an ordinance. So if this is a new ordinance, could this maybe go to a joint Subcommittee of Legislative Affairs as well? Because there is, in Section 1, it seems to speak to all public construction projects in the city, but then later in Sections 2 and 3, it's just referring specifically to construction of the new Revere High School. So I'm a little confused regarding that. So maybe if we did a joint Subcommittee with Legislative Affairs, we could kind of tweak that and just get some clarification.
Mr. President, this is just a preamble. So I think if we could just, sorry, go ahead. This is just a preamble, so...
Well, if I, if I could make a suggestion, I think having a joint Subcommittee, having two chairs and whatnot, I don't think that's the right move. We can put this into the Workforce Subcommittee and then take it out and put it into Legislative Affairs to have a separate... No, this is going to get referred to a Subcommittee. So that would be my recommendation, is to do one Subcommittee and tackle the issues there, and then legislative issues that are involved with it, we could tackle at a later date. I don't know how you feel about that, councillor?
I'm remenable to that.
Councillor Kelly, any objection to that plan?
That's fine.
Okay. So this is going to be referred to Climate Sustainability and Workforce Subcommittee.
A late motion. Motion presented by Councilor McKenna that the mayor requests the DCR to close the tide gates when a nor'easter is predicted by a meteorologist. The DCR used poor judgment during the last two nor'easters by not closing the tide gates, leaving the lower portion of Beauchamp underwater, including a brand-new park installation, which cost the city thousands of dollars.
Councillor McKenna?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have pictures to show of the Wednesday and Thursday storm. So I just want everybody to know, and I know everybody knows that I've lived in Beauchamp my entire life, same house, a block away from the ocean. I've been a city councillor for nine years and experienced many, many storms. For more than a week, meteorologists were predicting that there was going to be a coastal storm, a nor'easter with 60 mile-an-hour winds, heavy rains, and high tides. Living by the coast, you never underestimate a nor'easter because the winds come off the water and they push the ocean onto the land, which happened Wednesday and Thursday. A nor'easter is not like a regular storm with winds coming off the southwest. It's different. So if you, so if you're predicting tides that are 13-foot tides, you're really getting more than that. April 3rd, Wednesday night, they asked to have the floodgates closed. The response was, well, they are only predicting 13-foot waves. We usually don't close them unless we have 14-foot waves. Thursday, I asked again to have the floodgates closed. Bill Goode from DCR said, I will not close them, and I stand by my decision. Okay, great. Because of this man's blunder, the whole lower half of Beauchamp received 2 and 1/2 to 3 feet of water because he did not close the gates. Ocean water was rolling down Winford Parkway, inundating these areas. People lost cars, boilers, washers and dryers. Their basements were flooded, and yards were flooded. A park that the city has been working on for the last three years, which we just started renovating, that cost $155,000, had 2 feet of water. No one in the lower half of Beauchamp has seen this flooding in 27 years. 27 years. Because I don't understand, we have floodgates, okay? The Army Corps of Engineers designed these floodgates to protect the lower half of Beauchamp. And you have one man and a couple of, a couple of other men, 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 I don't even count, and I'm a councillor and a woman, all right? And these men made the decision to not close these gates, okay? Then why do we have the gates? Why do we have gates? It takes, I don't know, a crank to close the gates. You keep them closed for high tides, it's two hours. I understand if there's an emergency, okay, there's an emergency, the apparatuses will get through if there's an emergency. I know the Revere firefighters, fighters would get past this emergency, to get to the emergency. I understand that we're inconveniencing Winford residents for two hours, but we had at least 50 families that were inundated with water, that lost cars, that lost everything. Because... that lost cars, that lost everything, because one man made a decision that he wasn't going to shut the gate for two hours. Okay? I, so DCR totally dropped the ball on this one, and I hope in the future they do a better job of playing god for these poor Beauchamp residents. Thank you very much.
Thank you, counselor. Any other counselors wishing to speak? Counselor Garina Sowea?
I completely agree with my fellow counselor, as I represent another really, really bad area when it comes to water and flooding and nor'easters. And DCR definitely dropped the ball on this one, and I hold them completely responsible, and this should never, ever, ever happen again. Close those gates when they need to be closed.
Thank you, counselor. All in favor, all opposed? Oh, we have, I have my apologies, ma'am. Come on up. Name and address for the record.
Okay. Hi, my name is Lorraine Choffey. Thank you for having me. I'm a resident at 181 Winthrop Parkway in Revere, and I've been there for 26 and a half years. In October, it will be 27 years. My house just got destroyed. My downstairs is destroyed. They put me on flood, when I first bought the house in 97, I was on flood insurance. When they built the wall across the street from my home, they took us off flood insurance. Two years ago, they made us go back on it because the water table is rising. The water table did not rise. The floodgates and the park, that's what caused this. I have videos from my house. I can see the floodgates from my bedroom window. I can see the waves coming over. In my spare room, which used to be my daughter's room, I have full view of the park. I saw workers from Revere, DPW. They were shocked that it was flooded, and one went in the park and had to pull a yellow plastic net that was, that was put in the drains for the renovations of the park. When he removed that yellow plastic netting, the water started receding. At 8:00 in the morning, my downstairs was flooded. When he went about 2:00 and pulled that, the water started receding. My whole backyard, water was gushing in my home. I've never had water. I have a complete renovated downstairs with Italian tile on the floor, a marble fireplace, custom cabinets. I am destroyed. Now, the flood insurance tell me I'm a basement. Do you know what that means? That means they don't cover diddly except a cleaning, and if I want to cut a wall. So now I have to go to my home insurance and see if they'll help me. I'm retired. I've lived in the city for almost 27 years. I had to go back to work so I don't lose my house, and now I get hit with this. The floodgates destroyed our area. I don't know what else to say. I don't know what you can do, but we definitely need help. This was, this could have been, this was preventable. Definitely preventable. And anybody that would like to come to my home, I invite you. You can come to my home. I will show you videos. I don't know how to put it up on your website. I have it on my phone. You can see the water coming in my home. You can see the cars that are stuck. Not, cars not just stuck on Broad Sound, which usually floods, okay? Leverett Cars were being towed because we had so much water. The water coming down the Parkway was going around Broad Sound, not straight across Broad Sound and up the Parkway. It was going everywhere and in my house. I don't have anything else to say. I hope that you can help me and help us, our area. And the park, it's destroyed. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Good evening, sir. Name and address for the record, please.
Hal Abrams, 169 Winthrop Parkway. And we all love each other. We're all friends and neighbors. And we have not had flooding since all the improvements done in the previous administrations. In fact, she's absolutely right. What was a flood area at one time is no longer a flood, a flood area on the Revere flood maps. My house was in the flood area, and it was taken out of the flood area because of the precautions, because of the reventments, because of the pumping stations, because of the gate. And they all have to be simultaneously worked. Sometimes things happen during a storm. We all know that. In previous years, when DCR did not act, I believe the Revere Emergency Management Council or group of people that used to head it, they opened up the gates themselves. They went down there with DPW, and they overs, they overran whatever objection, MDC or DCR during those times. And Revere did it. His, Donnie Goodwin would go down there with a full, full loader. He'd open up the gates and prevent the flooding from happening. Another person from, who used to live in War III, Joe Del Greco. Joe Del Greco used to come down there during the storm, was head of DCR, and he would make sure the pumps would be working, the gate is open, and all the measures work. In fact, he went one better. There is a drain that has not been cleaned in numerous years that goes in the back of her house, my house, in the back of, it would be Leverett Ave, and back of Louis Pasteur. And then this drain goes underneath the Our Lady of Love Church to Sales Creek, which I'm glad to hear that it's going to be, Sales Creek is going to be cleaned out shortly. But this drain also takes away the water, goes in through Sales Creek, and then goes back to the ocean and back to Suffolk Downs. This too needs to be cleaned out, and they used to clean it out with the vac machine. And they would take all the sludge out of there and everything that's in there. And we're hoping that in case something does happen again with DCR, Revere can override it. It can be, it can be done with a mandate, and it has been done before. Sometimes people in DCR, they're busy in other areas. But our DPW always went to the cars and they would take care of it. And we ask that we get back on that procedure. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Counselor Haas?
Thank you for the leeway, Mr. President. I was thinking that was a thing a few years back that the DPW or someone would overrun that. And I was thinking, I was a little crazy till Mr. Abrams brought that up, but I don't understand. I think it was Mr. Gould that, and Counselor McKenna said the waves have to be a certain, I think 14 feet?
That's when they predict, they, to shut the gates is they have to be 14 feet, but it's a different scenario when it's a nor'easter coming in from the water. The winds are different, and the waves are higher. And I just want to say, because I have the floor right now, I'm sorry I interrupted you, but they did partially shut the road. So the road was shut anyways. So what, what if, and it was like a tenth of a mile down that they shut the road so people couldn't, they shut, shut beach. So a tenth of a mile that could have shut the, the gates, and people had to turn around, you know? So, I mean, it was crazy. They had the road shut. So shut the gates.
I agree totally. I think that's something the city should look into. I totally agree with Counselor McKenna and all the other counselors that spoke here tonight. Anytime we can lessen something like that amount of flooding that causes that amount of damage to those residents over in Beauchamp, that is definitely something we should look at. And, you know, maybe we should look at, the city makes its own call if that happens. That's something to think about.
Well, you have a counselor here that knows the predicament of, of the ocean. So, I mean, they could ask me, I, I mean, which they never have. So, thank you.
Thank you.
All in favor, all opposed? So ordered. Next Monday is Patriots Day.
Mr. President, appointed personal privilege.
Stay at your point, counselor.
Thank you, sir. I'm hoping that the president would say the next meeting's the 29th of. Thank you. But I just want everybody to know that next Monday is the beginning of Passover, you know, Jewish holiday. 22nd, two, on two Mondays, okay? I lose track of days. Next week's a holiday. And this is one of our key holidays that, you know, if everybody knows, we eat matzah, unleavened bread, because when the Jews were being attacked by the Egyptians at the time, and I don't want anybody to take offense to this. It's just history. And for 40 years, they were out in the desert, and they couldn't let the bread rise because the Egyptians were after the Jewish people all the time. So that's why we have this 10 days, and then there were the plagues and everything like that that went, that went on. But I do want to wish all my Jewish friends that are in hearing distance, my young lady from East Boston, and, you know, wish everybody a happy and healthy Passover. And we have to eat kosher. We can't eat out on the street. Everything has to be eaten in the house. So I just want to wish everybody, again, happy Passover, a healthy one, and a safe one. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. This meeting is adjourned, and the next meeting will be April 29th. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.